I'd like to call the caucus to order. Tonight we have two things on the agenda. Item number A is old business, we're going to read title only. Mr. Scobol, can you take care of that?
Sure.
Item number B, we're going to discuss right, or new business, item number A, we're going to discuss right now. It's for utility change in charges. Do we want to proceed at that tonight, or?
There's been some discussion here that maybe we ought to sit down and revisit this subject before dealing with it tonight. I think it may be a good idea. Take that off.
Yeah, whatever your pleasure. Everyone in agreement with that?
Yes, sir.
I just opened a log up, I was ready to act, but if you have some questions, those will be answered.
Okay, so we'll get rid of item number A, our new business. We'll need to discuss that. So we have two approval minutes, and we also are going to go into executive session following councilman comments. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please rise for the pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. Rule call, please.
Mr. President.
Here.
Mr. Kay.
Present.
Mr. Moray.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Mr. Scobola.
Present.
We have four, the meeting is in session. Item number four, approval minutes. We have two sets of minutes, October 2nd and October 16th. Any corrections, changes, or additions? Sir. Hearing done, the minutes will stand. Item number five, reading of communications. Mr. Scobol? Nothing. I have nothing, Mr. Moray?
Just the, I had a comment on the, and Joe, you were probably going to bring it up, the Gresel Park, the tennis courts, how magnificent they look. So, all positive. Still getting some concerns, you know, about the traffic, R46, but, you know, no one's really in a panic, and reassure them that the job will be done and life will go on.
Mr. Kay?
Yes, I'm happy to report to the mayor's court, there's a full moon last month, as you know, and our fines were $5,543.08. Those who have committed sins against our city have been justified.
Mr. Walrada?
I have the honor of communication.
We've got item number six, reports committee, board, and city manager. Mr. Scobol?
High District has signed off on its full-time employee contract, which is a reasonably good package for both parties. Effective July 1 of this year. More than that, the fire department has been given an opportunity to have a very special training vehicle made, and that vehicle happens to be a house. And that will be a house on 224, directly across from John Eagle. And in the last couple of days, a week, they have been doing some training in that house, which is soon going to be put on fire for training purposes, and offers our firefighters a heck of a good experience as to how to deal with this type of situation. It's an old, very old billy, and being that there's a number of old buildings in town, this type of experience will offer the opportunity to know what to expect in case one of these old buildings is damaged or something. Very important vehicle experience.
Mr. Moray, anything to add?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Mr. Kay?
No, I gave my brief.
Mr. Walrada?
Hey, I'd like to the caucus, this time, we only have one item of legislation to deal with this evening, and that being the ordinance amending our subdivision regulations. And again, this goes back to the current language in the subdivision regulations, which I can only assume was adopted, the ODOT standards back at the time, and what we'd like to do is bring that up to the current ODOT standards on sight distance and visibility. And rather than adjust it from time to time in the future, if we just amend the language to state that it'll comply with the ODOT regulations, it would be basically a living document, it'll adjust each time the ODOT standards adjust. Certainly recommend passage of that. Couple other items, I had a request from the Canful Rotary Club. They're looking at doing something a little more, in their words, spectacular for the tree lighting on the Village Green this year, and I don't want to give away all their secrets of what they're proposing, but what they're asking from the city is that they can install a permanent installation of electricity at four different locations on the center part of the Village Green, that portion that has the gazebo. And they're taking care of all the cost of materials and electrical, the design specifications. The only thing they're asking, if the city could cooperate with the restoration and seeding in the springtime, because they obviously won't be able to plan anything at this time of year. Just to get your okay on that, if it's all right.
Yeah, being that's a state's property, we have the right to do this.
Yeah, the, yeah, we can talk offline about that, maybe, figure a way through that.
And we have completed other improvements on there, the city has, as far as sprinklers and lighting around the green.
Joe, there were four new installations, what's the size of these?
They're looking at just putting quadruple boxes at four different trees on the remote corners of it. They won't be sticking out where they'd be hit by the mower, they would be up against a tree or somewhere that would be out of the way. And it's, again, so they would have access for lighting, and, again, it would be serviceable during different events, the Fourth of July and other events that we have on the green that would provide electrical service to, rather than extending extension cords out throughout different locations.
And that's just an extension of the electrical service, not provided by the city?
Right, we have, we have current capacity at the gazebo, they would just be pulling off of that box, putting in additional ground fault breakers at four different locations. And it's just the running of the conduit from the gazebo, again, out to the four different remote locations. And they would, again, fund the cost of the materials and the labor to do the installation, or the city would take care of seeding in the springtime.
And anybody can use it?
I'm sorry?
Anybody can use it?
Yeah, well, again, the control would be at gazebo, which we can lock up. Wouldn't be on at all times, they would be put on for different events. Joe, I know they're trying to coordinate this with the lighting of the green, so there is an urgency to get any answer to the Rotary, you know, if they're not proceeding. Right, they're looking at, obviously, a two or three week window of getting this work accomplished, if council's a table.
And is that no cost to the city, so?
I wouldn't have any objection. Could we say that, assuming there's no legal impediments, that you'd all be in favor of that? Yeah. Okay. Being on the Board, Rotary Board, EMS Board, I probably would have to abstain of any comment. There. And then I also had another request from the resident across the street from the holiday display that's on Fairview Avenue. I guess during the holiday season, there's quite a bit of traffic on that street, and people are parking across the street to watch it go through its progression, and there's music, I guess, that's coordinated to this. And what they're asking is that we put up no parking signs on that side of the street so that they don't have to experience the restoration of the rutting and what happens during the winter months.
Joe, we do that now for special events, special resident.
Right, we do that, like, for garage sales and things of that nature, and I didn't think that would be a problem, and, again, I just wanted to vote it past council so that you're aware of that. And just an update on the projects, the paving is completed on around the Village Green, they are working on the striping. Not 100% satisfied with the finished product we got out there, and had a couple of various meetings with the officials, and we have another one scheduled for next week, barring the outcome of those meetings, I guess I'll reserve my comments till.
One of those problems on the corner at 224 and the west piece of South Broad, right on the corner where the bank is?
Yeah, so one manhole there that has to be adjusted, there are actually three manholes that still need adjusted to grade. I'm more concerned as well with the drivability or the surface that we got, and the time, the weather conditions that were available at the time they put it down, and I want to see a product that's going to last out there.
What kind of guarantees, if any, do you get on that?
I'm sorry?
What kind of guarantees, of any kind, do you get on that?
Yeah, other than the one-year maintenance bond that the contractor would have, really there's nothing, and that's the only thing we have to rely upon, the one-year serviceability.
I think, you told me that that had to be put down with temperatures at 70 degrees or thereabouts?
Right, that's what, some of the problems I have with it, again, I'm no asphalt expert, but initially that's what I was told, and then it was modified later in the process.
So the temperature down, outside, except down, too?
They, they, I'm trying to get some clarification from people that are experts in that field, and then make a determination from that point.
Another issue, too, with the paving, the striping, and everything, I've almost seen a few wrecks up there, people coming west on Main Street, and you know when the arrows tell you to turn left, people are going in that lane and continuing straight on, so it's almost...
I almost got killed there the other day.
Yeah, I've seen a few.
If no arrow on the ground?
Yeah, no arrow for any of those turning lanes, people continue and go straight to get them.
Well, yeah, a lot of that, the arrows, those still have to be put down, they were doing the stop bars and just some, trying to get to them.
Temporary arrows before somebody.
I tell you, it happened to me, I'm stopped at the light there, and the light turned green, and I went forward, a guy came right past me into that left-hand lane without the arrow, and went right in front of me, almost killed me, okay? Some temporary should be put there.
Yeah, I'll make them aware of that.
You know, you've got to have lines, when we had done it in the Village Green, there were no lines at all, and there was a guy in court the other night, Newcastle, he'd never been in our town before, came into town, there were two cars parked in front of the bank facing south, he thought it was a boulevard, so he was in the northbound lane, headed south, then turned onto 62, and there was a police officer parked in the insurance agency, and the guy goes, I don't know, he's, I thought it was a boulevard, and he had a good point, there were no lines at that one, you know? So he has to come see one and ask for it.
Each day or each time through the process, they did put temporary striping down after they were complete that day, it was a center line, so, as far as the arrows go, and there were no arrows or directions.
Joe, I have a question, on the corner there, the bank, there's a post, and what is up with that?
I asked the same question, I ran that past our public works department, nobody seems to know it, so I wondered if it was some historical marker that sacred grounded it. Yeah. Yeah, we need to address that in some manner, if we're going to preserve it, let's make it look nice, or get rid of it. Yeah, it has a date on it, and it's, it's like an old itching post.
It's a cement post, but the whole bottom is deteriorated.
Yeah, the rods are holding it up.
Rods are holding it up, yeah.
And that's for a farmer to come to town on horseback.
The other, the other issue they ran across with the project, the ODOT evidently changed their standards for reflectivity on the signs, and came up with a new standard, but we're one of the first projects to use the new signs, and when they fabricated or did the shop drawings for Fairground Boulevard and Barnstone, the signs were six and a half foot long. So, they went back to District Four, and they're trying to modify their spec so that they'll get them back into a reasonable size, because they were, we're talking about a one foot by six and a half with the street sign, which is not acceptable.
Another issue, Joe, too, it's on the southeast section in front of the church there in the township building, remember we had the stripes, and the people were going into that lane?
They're putting those back.
That's all.
Yeah, we did get them to agree to put those in there, I couldn't find any documentation at first that had those, that they were there before, the aerial photographs were taken before we put those down, but they had agreed to go ahead and, actually, they're marked out there, they have them prepared to put down, they'll have the severance back in there. But they were very helpful, I mean, we've had a lot of people, I think Nancy experienced it, where people think that's another lane, and then they get hurt. So that'll be, that'll be taken care of downstairs.
Joe, off of that subject, you presented to us a communication, there was like 12 homes that were made. Any update on those homes?
No, it's, again, that's a living document, I'm sorry, I was remiss in getting that to you sooner, and since the last update, but we've had a number of homes, and actually, I think I said with my memo, we've made a request to the Board of Health on the property on Deer Trail, and it's been vacant for some time, the homeowner's taken up residence in one of the condo developments in the area, but it's pretty much abandoned the home, it's, basement's failing on it, the garage is periodically left open, I got a letter back from the Board of Health saying that they found no reason that it violates their healthy health code, and the case is closed. So, I mean, we're not just not getting any help from the Board of Health, it's another home like Skyline, and I'm trying to think of some of the others, we have a list of about four or five that are, in my opinion, in the state of demolition, and we may have to start budgeting a little heavier in demolition next year.
Joe, what's still missing off that sheet is how much we've done with the grass cutting and how much, you know, rent the property.
We keep track, we keep track of them, we only do that once a year, at the end of the year, then we'll come up with the total amount, and that's sent to the auditor's office. Marty used to keep track, but Todd now keeps track of the hours, and we put all that together at the end of the year, so I don't have a running total to date as to, you know, how much we've maintained over this one, unless I'll be able to give that information towards you.
Joe, you showed me a picture of the house on Sawmill.
Yeah.
Okay? Has that property owner been cited?
Yeah, I had sent a letter out on that one yesterday, and it was just brought to my attention.
Good. Mr. Fordyall?
A few items real quick, I do need an executive session, and that would be the acquisition of disposition of real estate. Things are proceeding pretty well with the library project, they submitted a plaque, there were some corrections that needed to be done to that, zoning inspector and the city manager worked with the library to get a free plaque that was acceptable, planning and zoning is going to be handling some adjustments for that project, that'll be, you know, we've talked to the library about it, I think planning and zoning will be amenable to those adjustments, so, that's kind of moving forward at a pretty good pace now.
Counselor, did they give us any indication as to what the disposition of the two houses that they own are going to be?
No.
No?
I'm assuming demolished. You're going to see an income tax ordinance modifying chapter 183, there's, I guess, quite a bit of substantive changes in it, the author is sitting to your left there, Mr. Scobola, we've gone over, Vicki Shook from the Income Tax Department has looked at it, so, you're going to see that on your agenda pretty soon. The annexation proposal that we've discussed, that seems to be progressing, it will be forthcoming, I think fairly soon, we'll have a resolution where we'll have to indicate whether you will or will not provide services to the area proposed to be annexed. I've drafted a vehicle agreement for, you'll see on your next agenda, for, it's somewhat of a lease, a, an auto dealer is providing, this police department, pre-use of the vehicle, and we need a new agreement, we submitted that agreement for the review, and just received that back, so you'll see that. Charter Review Commission is steaming forward with some pretty good recommendations, I think we have, our next meeting is when, Mr. Kish?
29th.
29th of November, I suspect based on the election results last night, they may have a couple of additional items they may want to put forth, but that's obviously up to them, and those come to you for your recommendation. And then you're going to see, we're planning and zoning is going to start working next week, and you'll probably see it in December, an ordinance modifying our sign ordinance, providing a new height limitation for all signs, and some landscaping required. So, I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Mr. Kay?
Just like to report, basically, on the North Broad Street safety upgrade project, it is approximately 40% complete, excuse me, the contractor successfully relocated the water line last week, is preparing to install the culvert this week, and then also started widening operations on the west side of the roadway. We're keeping the city manager informed on an ongoing basis, and we're currently reviewing some existing field conditions that may or may not impact the project out there. I think there have been a few complaints, as I think I heard earlier, about traffic, especially at the end of the school day, and we're addressing those complaints, just to make you aware, there are uniform deputy sheriffs conducting traffic control out there, and it's a process that requires some patience on behalf of the public, and I know that those officers are doing the best job that they possibly can, certainly appreciate, you know, the cooperation of the traveling public. Initially, I was prepared to inform you tonight, in my preparations for this report, that the project is going extremely well, on schedule and without a hitch. Essentially, I can still say that, but there is an issue that I think has to be brought to light to council, just so you're aware of it, and the issue impacts the cost of the project, but not the functionality. In a nutshell, what happened was, you're reviewing a second pay request, the, all the curb and gutter on the east side of the roadway has been installed, we would expect to see about 50% of a request for payment on that, and that request for payment came in at about 67, 66, 67%, which means there wasn't enough curb and gutter on the bid form to cover the entire project. The, as I said, it impacts the cost of the project, not the functionality, the plans were correct. What happened was, there is a sub-summary sheet with any roadway project that basically delineates all of the unit costs and the unit quantities for, to be included in the bid form. It was an Excel spreadsheet, the line item was there for the curving and portions of the project, because that curving is split out as you get into, you know, in the various aspects of the project, the one Excel cell, if you will, was blanked, hence, everything got carried through to the general summary, that general summary got carried through to the bid form, it's about 761 lineal feet that was not included on the bid form, and that amount was, for the bid amount, by this, the successful contractor was $16.50 per lineal foot, comes out to about $12,500. There again, that was an inadvertent mistake, it was a number that was not carried through off the Excel spreadsheet, but it will have to be addressed at a future date here by change order.
Every bidder was afforded the same documentation, serving as a base for bidding?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's, that's correct, and that's why, if, if that number would have been caught early, that would have been reflected on the bid form, so yes, everybody was, everybody bid apples to apples, oranges to oranges, there was, the bid form reflects that, as, you know, the competitive nature of it.
That particular bid item came in at $16.50?
Yes.
What was the next closest bidder?
Actually, the next, the next lowest bidder was, I think, about $140,000 to $150,000 higher than the low bidder.
No, I'm talking about on that quantity?
On that quantity, his, he was at $17 per lineal foot, I believe, about 50 cents higher. The average of the four or five bids that were received on that quantity there was $16.39, so, yeah, he was, the low bidder was 11 cents off per lineal foot.
David, have we reviewed this document to see if there was any other similar error in accordance with an isolated, was this an isolated incident?
That was an isolated incident, actually, as you go through the design process, there's a lot of these things that are caught, I mean, there's three and a half pages of, you know, unit costs and unit quantities that were calculated, yes, we believe that's an isolated incident.
Well, where I come from, if everybody dealt with the same situation in a similar manner, I guess you got a human error, and, again, it appears to me that it's been a fair presentation of the same data, so.
Yeah, and actually, it appears that nobody knew about it, because nobody really took advantage of that situation, if somebody would have known about it and wanted to take advantage of the situation, they could have put $50 or $60 on that and made proverbial killing.
That's why I asked you the question. It appears to be, it's a human mistake.
But I, I wanted to bring that to your attention, because I thought that was important.
Moving on to item number seven, recognition of persons desiring to appear before council. Mr. Burkia.
Good evening, I'm Frank Burkia, reside at 220 Vendings. I'm going to reserve any comments about the election for a later date, however, during this process, I try to be forthright in my actions, in writings, and yes, there were some individual muckraking, but I did not expect any bias from city officials. During elections, the zoning inspector becomes aggressive in regard to the placement of political signs, several of mine were confiscated, and if they were in violation, I have no issue with that. I did retrieve them from the public works area, but I found no vote no signs there. I checked the area twice. About a week before the election, I personally pointed out to the city manager that there were several vote no political signs in violation on West Main and South Broad Streets. As of election day, they were still there. Why weren't they confiscated, since they were identified and were in violation? I did a quick photography trip around the city on Monday, November 4th, I found numerous violations of vote no signs, some on Main thoroughfares, they were easy to find. I won't talk about all these, but here's one that's on West Main, right there, right next to the street, it happens to be in front of a business where there's a person who works there sits on one of the boards. I have a couple here that are in the lawn of a city, of a council person, right against the street, seems to be a pattern here. On West Main? These weren't on West Main, no. Okay, just wanted to clear it out. And I might have to go through all these, but I have several here which are in violation of the sign ordinances. Now, each of us is entitled to their opinion on valid issues, but city officials are not free to enforce ordinances based on their positions on issues. The evidence, photographic suggests that fairness was clearly not the issue this year. Let it be recorded, that the zoning inspector, working for the city manager, does sit on one of the boards. In my opinion, the ordinance process was biased and reflects poorly on the city administration.
Wait, wait a minute, Frank.
Yes?
The zoning inspector does not sit on the boards. Correct, Mark?
He's the secretary to the Planning and Zoning Commission, but he does not sit on the board.
Okay, he's, he's... No right to vote, nothing?
Just part of the zoning inspection.
He sits on, he is on the board.
He does not sit on the boards, not a member of that...
Okay, that's it, I'll accept that, correct. Now, our people deserve integrity and honest from public officials, you may keep the photos, perhaps someone can let me know why they were not confiscated with the same zeal as the vote yes signs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Frank, I think, when that happens, I think it's, it is indeed unfair that type of practice happened, that your signs were different. I would like to point out that just, we did have some signs end up missing, I don't know where they went, Joe.
Me, too.
Yeah, people just driving by, wouldn't need to have an answer, if I don't know.
Maybe there was such of artistic value, they took them home and framed.
Yeah.
Mr. Easton?
Mr. Easton, to Lady Glenview Drive, I have just one question, I wonder if there's any considerations to doing anything between Walker's Colts and Glenview College on Sawmill Wind Creek, such as dredging, straightening, designing, messing with it.
At this time, I don't know of anything in the works, Mr. Walrada?
Yeah, again, there's nothing, say on the radar screen, we do have the Verdamt culvert submitted for issue two, the actual early rounds of the program, it's not doing very well, again, there's nothing in between Verdamt and Glenview that's...
You're going to have three new people on the council.
Sure, there are.
Great.
Thank you.
Mr. Tish.
My name is Chuck Tish. I live at one thirty Wadsworth Street, Campfield. Actually, I had signed up to address the issue that you removed from the agenda, the utility charges. And I guess my question along that line was the basis for removal of that, and so if you would just take that into consideration as far as your discussions are concerned. I was wondering whether you might grant me some latitude, because I did not list a couple of other items that were discussed earlier. One item was the demolition of the property on East Main Street, the one the fire department is going to be launching. I'm presuming that that's been through designer view committee, and you're familiar with the historic significance of that structure and that kind of thing, but it's proceeding okay. Fine and dandy.
At our last meeting, Mr. Tish, we talked about the shape it was in and everything, and I think some people wanted to look at it to try to restore it and do that, and I think it was passed.
Okay. I, I just brought it up because I was not at that meeting, and I figured it'd been through that, but asking a question.
We had a bunch of pictures here that depicted the horrible nature of the building itself.
Okay. The other is maybe information. The concrete post that you're talking about, the quarter to bank, that is a property post dominating the property line there on East and West Main Street. Been there in some fashion for as long as I can remember, which unfortunately is a lot of years. Just information.
Did you put your horse there, did you?
No, my bicycle. And then lastly, the rotary project on the Village Green. Just be aware that you do have a water service line coming from, in front of the, direction of Methodist Church, there's a water shut off there. It comes over to Drinking Fountain in the center of the, the green, so if they're doing it underground to the four corners, they sure wouldn't want to hear that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Buck.
Sam Buck, one six seven Glenwood Drive, former city council member. Frank, I love your passion for the city. It's great that you're taking, doing what you're doing, but I think it's taking us backwards. We have solid compassionate people who have been helping with this community for years and years, and it's going to be hard to find the same people that have the compassion they have come forward for, the knowledge to be on the chair people or whatever on the committees they were on. As for the elected officials, I feel there was already something in pro, there was a term in process. It's called term, the term limits, you simply just vote them out. But moving on, city council members, I have to be honest with you, Mayor, I'm very disappointed in you. I'll tell you to your face, and I'll tell you on the side as well. You were elected to be the leaders of the city, and I feel in yesterday's election, you let the city down. Your job is to help educate the people and represent the city properly. And Mayor, you would understand about education with your past. Without that education, you can't go very far. I felt that you all should have been out there helping educate the people in the city about the vote that they had to take a chance on. I realized there was a couple articles in the paper. Ten, twenty percent of this community reads those articles, and maybe those are the ones that voted with the no's yesterday, but the rest didn't. I took the time and I drove to all the voting polls, not to see anybody representing what maybe you should be so compassionate about. I was compassionate enough to get the signs printed. I appreciate you putting them out, but I think the city residents were looking for you to come out and make more statement and represent it. And I think if you would have been at the polls yesterday with that sign and just said, hey, we have everything in play, please work with us. This is what we do, this is what you elected us to do, I think we got to change that vote, quite simply. Two people could have changed one of the votes yesterday. Two people, and you lose by three. The other one could have gone simply. This will have a major impact on the city, and these charters are not going the right way for us. I think we need to look back and see where we're going to go with this, and obviously, hopefully, local council can help come up with something down the road to take it. But we, we are concerning ones, and elected officials in the future of this, need to have the compassion to go out there and help educate the people of what the way it is the vote. I thank you for your time very much.
Sam, before you sit down, I appreciate the criticism, all right? But I didn't see you stepping up last time, okay, as a community leader, okay? I didn't see any community here that's volunteering, go door to door, work the poll. And I want you to know, we did do some stuff, all right? I personally called a hundred people, a hundred phone calls, called people. Now, see, and I thought they were key community here, and asked them to talk to people, all right? You don't know what we did or what we didn't do.
Well, I-
As far as being at the polls, we had, we had agreed Frank wasn't at the poll, I wasn't at the poll, all right? Last time, I was there for twelve hours at the poll, all right? I educated people so well, went down seventy to thirty. So that's how effective it is sometimes being at the poll.
Well, I did talk to you last time, and I did talk to your local council as well about this. We had several discussions, I think, but your, your statement to me was, well, listen to what the people say. That was your comment to it.
I listened to what was said.
In so many words, you said, well, the people are going to speak, and they're going to tell us how they want to do this, all the stuff that they said last time. And I remember that very passionately. That's why I stepped forward at the very end here, because I thought you guys would have had something in play. And I found that you did.
Well, if I don't want to spend hours for twelve hours, you mean, that's Frank, I was there from six thirty to pretty much seven thirty.
But the, but the whole community should have been rallying with this, all these people that are on these committees.
The whole community, not just these four or five people.
But we're assuming, though, that the people didn't want this, but they voted for it. You're assuming that. Why, I mean, obviously, Sam, they voted for term limits, and now they voted for this charter. So apparently, city people in Campfield aren't that ignorant. They can read. I understand, but if you would have turned around and said, you know what, there already is a term limits. No, I feel that this is what they want. They wanted term limits, and now they got the charter changed for committee members. And so, that's what we have to live with.
We're a product of, of the national feeling toward politicians, you know? Get them out, get them out, they've been in there too long. That's a national-
Yeah, we're assuming that they misread or did something inadvertently, and I don't think so. I think they read and they knew exactly what they were voting for, and that's what they want, and that's what they're going to have. We're here to represent that.
Let's ask one, you know, I resent you coming in and criticizing us when you don't know what we did, okay?
Sam, I accept your criticism. One thing I didn't want to do, they did vote the term limits, which was personally affected me, where I could not run if I wanted to. So I didn't want to be at a poll trying to push something, even people that might not like me, might vote the other way thinking, hey, I don't like this guy, that's why I voted him out of council, that's why I'm going to go and get a sense. I didn't want to do anything like that, I understand, because I don't know.
I understand. I just, last night, I stood up at the, went across from the campus fairgrounds, because my wife come in late, came out of town, and I took her up there to vote, and I stood outside, and I talked to people coming out, and not one person understood that they voted, they just voted, they voted yes, thinking that was the way to do it. When I talked to everyone, I talked to probably near fifteen, eighteen people in a matter of their twenty, twenty-five minutes of actual conversation, they wished they could have gone back in there and changed their vote. They did not understand what they voted for. See, what I understand-
Could be a civic lesson taught right there, that when you, when you sign something, you read it, and you vote on something, you know what you voted for.
Well, but we're back to educate, and that was my whole context I was trying to give to you, Mayor, is we needed to educate them. Educating can go either way. If you had gone for Frank, could have gone for you, but I think the people didn't have enough information. They came there to vote and, and didn't understand the impact of it. And that's what we do when we educate people, it's not, it's not just reading something, but they have to understand what is the progress here, what can we gain and what can we lose. I don't think they understood that.
I spoke to a lot of people, they understood, you know, they understood quite obviously, Sam.
I spoke, I spoke to a few people also, and they asked, why is it on there? And I said, kind of to get rid of the good old boy appointments under these boards. And they says, well, I don't understand, we now have term limits for council members, so we're going to have a whole new council. Now we're going to have term limits for the boards, so now we're going to have a whole new board with the whole new council. You talk about a great opportunity for the good old boy system. I says, yeah, you're right. I said, it made worse. I says, we have great people on these boards who were appointed by, when we were on council. Twenty years ago, somebody was on council, appointed there. We might have met them through council, but we didn't put them on there. So there was no good old boy system. Now we're in place where we got a great opportunity to do a good old boy system here, and how do you took the city back like you said? I agree with you.
But Sam, you can see by the number of people that attend these council meetings, and you experienced that yourself, or you were a council, okay? And as far as informing the public about what was going on, and let's talk about talking at meetings, okay? There were at least four different times at these council meetings, and I explained how easy it is for people to make their feelings known about whatever it was that was on the table. One of the things that, that delivers those kinds of messages at council meetings like this, where there's hardly anybody present, is those folks that represent the media, okay? Sorry to say, but not one word of that explanation that I gave four different times ever appeared in a public opinion determiner media. We tried, Sam, and we tried very hard, okay? Not only build and make a hundred, hundred calls. I stood out in front of the church there last Sunday and tried to explain to people what was going on, and I've had a lot of communications, as do these folks as well. A situation isn't one that you can explain in two minutes and twenty seconds. It takes a bit of time and understanding. And surely, Frank's position about having the ability or wanting the ability to talk at any time in a meeting, that's, that's a thing that hits people strong. Please don't deny me my opportunity to speak. It's a valid situation. But unless the whole story is thoroughly understood by those that come to vote on those questions, you get what you got, and we got it. Very simple. It's not as if any, again, anybody in this room didn't do the best they did to identify the subject, including Frank. And we wrote letters, Joe's wrote written letters, Frank's written letters. It's out there. But again, the understanding and the comprehension of what it was that was thoroughly reality didn't come through. Sure, the election is not over, by the way, there's still provincial votes to be made on, on at least one of those two charter limits, which is just a three vote differential as you mentioned. But communications is, is a very significant thing. And no matter what we did, as it's been said here, the voters voted.
I understand, but I think you went a long ways for being a ninety-tenth foot out of what was before, it's almost a fifty-fifty. But there are other means of doing it. There's a lot of social media opportunity and stuff like that to do it. I just think that there could have been a little more effort done, maybe there should have been a committee that got together and had twenty people that tell twenty more people and do that. I think everything was done at the very last moment, and we knew about this thing months and weeks in advance. There should have been a committee maybe brought together and call your leaders and call people like me out, say, hey, Sam, we believe we need your help. That's where I feel that the failure was. We failed to educate all the way down through. We don't give it a plum when you start school in eighth grade. You start at first grade and work your way up, and that's what I feel that we needed to do, and maybe the next time this comes about, we need to get committees together and bring them forward and rally it together. And obviously, Frank can do the same thing, but we have to educate.
Sam, I do know that three people who are on Facebook probably reached six hundred, some of them might have been good ones. The other thing, you are to be commended for stepping up and standing up for what you believe in, with the signs, so it was a nice, nice effort.
I'm just compassionate about the city, and I, I, sitting in your seats, I really feel what's happened has taken us back quite a bit, so. And I understand what you're going through, maybe the people out here don't understand, but I think some very well do understand.
One more point, Sam, to the point of educating. In our school system here, seniors are required to take a nine-week course in civics, okay? And basically, the curriculum in that course deals with the separation of powers at the federal level and some real generalizations of government, okay? One of the things that was required of those students was that they attended a council or a board of trustees meeting, and we have a nice rotary sponsored civics day. But without the knowledge and education of those students as to what our very simple local government is all about, what was the value of sending them to a city council meeting? They, they didn't even know the meaning of the word ordinance, or what the functionality of the council and the manager was, okay? And as far as civics stays concerned, that's a nice day for those youngsters to have, to be exposed to, but without an understanding of what they were exposed to, had no value other than a nice day for us to participate and get a good lunch. More has to be done there to educate our youth, so that when it comes to them being adults and voters in the community, they have a better appreciation and understanding of what it is that they're dealing with. Understand what you're voting for. And when you do that, as Bill mentioned before, when you read what it is that you're voting for and comprehend, and ask questions about what you don't understand, then you're going to get a better vote, and I think that may, that kind of scenario in place for a number of years would have critically changed the nature of yesterday's election. And we got to do something about that. We just can't, you know, have a, in a comment like I'm making tonight and let it pass. Nine weeks is nothing, and the education and understanding of your government is leads us to what it is we're talking about today, and it'll only get worse unless we do something better about it.
I, I saw the passion that those that ran four years ago, and the signs that went up and everybody like that. I hope the next leaders will have the same passion to want when there is opposition that they'll take and go out there and hit the streets and put the signs up, as you had that passion four years ago to do this right for the city. Thank you very, very much.
Definitely guilty of that, Sam. You know I went door to door eight years ago and didn't do it this time.
You did a great job there, too.
Like you said, I didn't do it this time. I agree.
Was it?
Yeah.
You got more, great. All right, thank you. Thank you all. It's good seeing everybody. I'm going to head out, I have another meeting.
Before we move on to item number eight, I'd like to apologize to Mr. Tish, Mr. Cozart, and Mr. Morve. In no way was I saying they're going to do the goal, but not mean it that way. Moving on to item number eight, old business. We're going to read title only. As per the provisions of section four one oh five of the charter of the city of Campfield, I move the council's defense requirement of the full reading of proposed ordinance and authorized reading by title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morve, discussion. Clerk?
Mr. Fazady.
Yes.
Mr. K.
Yes.
Mr. Morve.
Yes.
Mr. Schubel.
Yes.
That passes four, nothing. Mr. Schubel.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance amending ordinance section eleven oh nine point oh three B two of the codified ordinances of the city of Campfield to make certain requirements consistent with the Ohio Department of Transportation Location and Design Manual, and I move for approval.
Second by Mr. Morve, discussion. Clerk?
Mr. Fazady.
Yes.
Mr. K.
Yes.
Mr. Morve.
Yes.
Mr. Schubel.
Yes.
That passes four, nothing.
Clerk, the number, please.
Twenty thirteen dash thirty-six.
Thank you. Moving on to item number nine, new business. We have none. Item number ten, councilman comments. Mr. Schubel.
Yes, it was an interesting day, and I think we've, we've had an interesting discussion to this point in time in our meeting.
Clerk, the number, please.
Twenty fifteen dash thirty-six.
Thank you. Moving on to item number nine, new business. We have none. Item number ten, councilman comments. Mr. Schubel.
Yesterday was an interesting day, and I think we've, we've had an interesting discussion to this point in time in our meeting. Be that what it may, we just think positive and go forward now, is what it is that we have to do. Thank you.
Mr. Morbe.
I would just like to congratulate Mayor, Mr. Kozar, Councilman, and Mr. Tish, and welcome them aboard for two thousand and fourteen, and looking forward to working with you. So, congratulations.
Mr. Schubel.
Uh, yeah, just, just one comment, and I really hope that as far as I've read in today's newspaper, the vacancy of all of these commissions and board members' seats, I hope that what I read in the newspaper, which indicated that there were a lot of people waiting to take these positions and really come to the table with a lot of good ideas, I hope that they show up when these vacancies occur, because it didn't happen in this last election. Thank you.
I'm going to kind of piggyback on that. We had a planning meeting one night, and Mr. Morino asked me for a name for the commission right now when Mr. Tish is on it, and I had no name. And a gentleman came for the planning meeting, and I chased him down afterwards, and I asked, would you volunteer your time? And the gentleman says, I'm retired, I'm not, he's on the commission again. And never met the guy until that night, and he stepped up, and he was doing a great job. Mayor?
I have nothing serious to say about any of this stuff, okay? It's over what's done, and we're moving on. I just want to leave you with a thought. A really contented man has his yesterday's file away, his present, his present in order, and his future, subject to instant revision.
I would also like to say congratulations to Mr. Kozar, Mr. Tish, and good luck. The meetings that you're having.
No, not.
Oh, no, no, that's all right, no, permission.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council go to executive session for the purpose of discussing acquisition disposition of real estate, and I move for approval.
Do I have a second?
I say.
Second by the mayor, discussion. Clerk?
Mr. Fazady.
Yes.
Mr. Kay.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
That passes four, nothing. The meeting will be adjourned immediately following executive session.
Thank you. That's all right. Thanks for that. Thank you. Thanks for having us. 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 Thanks for having us.